I now call the December eighth, two thousand and fifteen special council meeting of the City of Riverton order at seven P M. Would council member please lead us in a pledge of allegiance? After that, council member Larson will lead us in prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve council in Riverton and to help our citizens. Father, we are thankful for this time of year and mindful of the Christmas season. Bless us, Father, that we might be mindful of each other, that we might serve with that in mind. And we say this humbly, "Name thy Son, Jesus Christ." Amen.
Amen. Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Holly Jiven.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Martin Cannon.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present, declare that we have a quorum. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I make the motion we approve the agenda as written. Second.
The move is seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The item of business for this meeting is consideration of four fun material bid award. Public Works Director, report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. During the recent construction of the runway reconstruction project, material for both road base and asphalt was mined and processed at the four fun pit. The material was mined, that was mined for the asphalt ultimately overran the original estimates for the runway. This meant that there currently sits right now approximately seven thousand tons of aggregate in various stockpiles at the four fun pit that meet the P four oh one FAA specification. The City of Riverton has a lease agreement with the four fun pit, and in that lease agreement, it explains that any excess material not used by the city by December eleventh, fifteen, shall be deemed abandoned and become the exclusive property of the four fun pit. In order to liquidate the excess material at the four fun pit prior to the above mentioned date, staff requested sealed bids from interested parties toward sale of this unblended aggregate. Pursuant to Wyoming State Statute fifteen dash one dash one one two, the city advertised the sale of this material once a week for three consecutive weeks. Bids were received and opened at five P M. on December second, twenty fifteen with the following result. Seventy-one Construction of Riverton, Wyoming, with a unit price of a dollar seven, with an approximate total of seven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. In the agreement between the City of Riverton and the four fun pit is a requirement to pay a royalty of one dollar a ton to the F F Investment L P., which is the four fun investment L P., for all materials removed from the site. In light of this royalty requirement, the city would only be making seven cents a ton on the sale of this excess material. Also included in the agreement is a requirement for the City of Riverton to reclaim the land under which the stockpiles are located, meaning that the city would be required to grade and place topsoil over each of the stockpiles as they would be hauled off the site in association with the sale of the material. Pursuant to Wyoming Statute fifteen one 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 two, municipal properties shall be sold to the highest responsible bidder unless the governing body of the city rejects all bids. It furthermore states that the responsibility of the bids shall be determined by the governing body. In light of how the bids came in, staff recommends that the city council rejects the proposed price of one dollar and seven cents a ton from seventy-one Construction towards the sale of approximately seven thousand total tons of aggregate crushed to meet FAA technical specifications, P four oh one. The proposed profit of seven cents per ton to be made by the sale does not justify the administrative costs and the reclamation investment required to finalize the sale. As far as budget impacts go, since the sale of the excess material was not projected in the current budget, there are no negative impacts on rejecting the proposed sealed bid from seventy-one Construction. The simply, the city would simply not gain the approximate four hundred and ninety dollars of unexpected revenue from the sale. Therefore, Your Honor, it is my recommendation and staff's recommendation that the city council rejects the bid supplied by seventy-one Construction. And with that caveat, I want to make sure that, clear that seventy-one Construction necessarily did not underbid us, but in light of the amount of material there, the sand that was there, their trucking costs would have been fairly high for that material. They were really interested in the aggregate and the crushed reject one inch aggregate, but in light of the excess sand, it drove their, their costs down for trucking purposes. And I just wanted to add that as a caveat. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any, um, chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor. Go ahead. Do we have a quote? Motion comes first before questions?
Yeah, and then discussion.
Okay. Your Honor, I'd make a recommendation we approve seventy-one Construction bid. Second.
Mm-hmm.
Or I would amend that, that we reject seventy-one's.
We'll vote it down.
I'm sorry?
We'll vote it down.
Yeah, we'll vote it down, yeah. That's how you do it. You, you, you move to approve it and then just vote against it if you don't want it. Okay. That's how Robert. Can't have a negative motion. You can let it die. Yeah.
Mr. Larson.
If we don't take that.
Did we get a, did we get a second on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did.
Okay, alright, okay.
If we don't, if we don't sell that, we don't have to remediate it, right?
Your Honor, that is correct. We would only have to remediate the material that was from the site.
Did we ever figure out what the cost for remediation was?
As far as a hard cost for remediation, Your Honor, no. I was going to have our crews go up, bring topsoil and level it out. The area beneath the current stockpiles is not that large. The majority of the site has already been reclaimed by the subcontractor who mined all the material. So it would have been fairly minimal and the city would have just had its staff go up and do it.
But it would have been probably in excess of five hundred dollars.
Your Honor, I would say that is accurate.
Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor? Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes no. Motion fails. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the special council meeting.
Motion to adjourn special council meeting?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Mayor votes aye. So, I now call the December eighth, two thousand and fifteen work session meeting of the Riverton City Council's order at seven oh nine. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the order.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. First item on the agenda is the victim witness presentation by Cindy Guston. Victim witness coordinator, report please.
Good evening. I'm here to do just a brief overview of victim services and hopefully I can work the technology. Our office is just down the hallway, second door on the right, right past the police department. And, so I'm going to start with, well, maybe, there we go. Okay. The staff, myself, I'm the victim, victim witness coordinator, and then we have a victim witness specialist, who's Pat Baby, and she's sitting back there with Captain Murphy. Basically, what we do is advocate for victims' rights as they progress through the criminal justice system. Once a crime has been committed and they have a defendant in custody, pretty much the laws and the court system all focus on the rights of the defendant. But what if you, what are your rights if you're the victim of a crime? In nineteen ninety-one, the Wyoming State Legislature passed a Wyoming Victims Bill of Rights. And in nineteen ninety-seven, they created the Division of Victim Services in Cheyenne. And they provide quite a bit of the funding for our program. The Victims Bill of Rights states that a victim has the right to be treated with compassion, respect, and sensitivity within the criminal justice system. They have the right to know the whereabouts of the offender and the current status of their case. They have the right to receive restitution from the offender. They have the right to know all their rights under this law, including information about victim services at the local level. They have the right to know about victims' compensation. They have the right to reasonable protection and safety and the right to know of the legal recourse if they're threatened, and occasionally victims are threatened. They have the right to their prompt return of, the prompt return of their property to the preservation of their employment while participating in the criminal justice process. They have the right to be informed about the opportunity to make a victim impact statement, and they have the right to be present at trial. Okay, so what do those ladies in the victim assistance office do to advocate for victims' rights? What does that mean, really? Well, in two thousand and fifteen, that means that we served two hundred and sixty-six new crime victims and provided services to folks that had already been victimized at some time in the past that still had things going on in their cases. So you can see that the majority of victims that we work with are, they're involved in crimes that are violent against, from individual to individual, like domestic violence and stalking. Fifty-five percent of our crimes were adult sexual assault assaults, child physical and sexual assault and domestic violence. Property crimes were, of course, less. We inform and educate victims, families, and the community about victims' rights, the processes of court proceedings, what to expect next in the system. We do education about issues like domestic violence and sexual assault. We collaborate with partner programs during the awareness months for those issues. We educate people about elder abuse, how to deal with fraud, which is a huge problem. We've been seeing a lot of elderly people getting scammed out of money. So we, you know, when we see something like that, we try to talk to the person and explain to them how to not be defrauded of their money. We do education on how to stay safe and where to go to get help. At an officer's request, we do immediate response on scene or at the hospital. We stay with victims in the emergency room during exams when a physical or sexual assault has occurred. We stay with a victim at their request during a sexual assault kit. We provide crisis counseling and support on scene to victims or family members. We provide criminal justice advocacy. At an officer's or victim's request, we can accompany them to a law enforcement interview. We help them prepare victim impact statements, restitution requests. We provide information on the status of their case, victim notification about court dates. We accompany the victim to court or go in their place and then inform them of the outcome. We also connect them to a service through the state, which is called Vine, and it's a victim notification service, which will text them or call them when the defendant is released from jail or transferred. We've assisted, in two thousand and fifteen, we assisted victims in applying for victims' compensation awards, which have totaled up to a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to help pay for medical, dental, counseling, and other crime-related expenses, funeral expenses related to homicides. And we're currently awaiting an approval on twelve additional applications for, for two thousand and fifteen, which would be an additional a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of resources for victims of crime in Riverton. In other words, the ladies in the victim assistance office are here to be a safe place, a friendly face, and a helping hand as crime victims make their way through the criminal justice system. Does anybody have any questions? I have lots of resources in my office. Anybody wants answers about anything? We may not know the answer, but we can usually figure it out or find a place where, where somebody would know, so.
Mr. Larson.
When you provide that service, do you provide that to Riverton general in size? Or how far out do we extend?
We provide services to folks that have been victimized in Riverton. So if they live, we've had people that live out of state that come here and they're a victim of a crime, we provide services to them. So as long as the crime was committed within Riverton's jurisdiction, so anywhere the police department goes, those are the victims we serve.
Okay, thank you. So then a follow-up to that would be then there's a similar office to yours for the county and, and Lander and?
We have, not every jurisdiction has victim assistance. Riverton has Pat and I. There is, the sheriff's office has Yvonne. B I A has a victim advocate. The FBI have two advocates. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, the county attorney, they have, they do a little bit different. They have two advocates that are funded through the Department of Victim Services. They do a little bit different. They do some of the similar kind of things that we do, but they don't go on scene or, they do a lot of things for the court. So, and they'll send out letters and things for the county attorney's office.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
What you do is important because sometimes the victims don't feel like they're healed up or fixed.
Yep. It's a very rewarding job. It's, I know sometimes it seems like it wouldn't be, but it's, it's awesome.
Good.
It really is. Thank you.
Mr. Larson.
One more question.
Sir?
On your, it appeared from your graph that the worst scenario was assault on women.
Domestic violence is a huge problem. Definitely.
And what are we doing to combat that?
I know we're holding, we're doing the other end, but what are we doing on the front end? There, there are a lot of educational programs going. The Fremont County Alliance Against Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, they do education programs. They've started some newer kind of programs for better education in the county. Not really sure about their stats and how it's going, but it's been a, it's, domestic violence has been a problem for a long time and it'll probably always be a problem. We try to help as much as we can and educate women, educate men, so.
So if, if somebody had been the victim of a theft and the court ordered restitution and then they don't, they don't make their payments, is that something that you work with?
Actually, that goes through the court.
Goes through?
Here, if it was, if it was a municipal case, that would go through the office.
City court?
And then they would hold them accountable for that.
Okay.
So what we do in that part is we help the victim gather up all the documentation of, you know, what was stolen or what was broken, and then we have them fill out a form and we get it notarized and we submit that to the court so they know how much to order.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next, the next item of business is code enforcement presentation by Rosie Albright.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
May I introduce her?
Sure.
Rosie Albright is our code enforcement officer for the City of Riverton. She was moved to the Community Development Department about a year and a half ago, and she's been just a great asset to our department. She's excellent at working with people and trying to get them to abide by our rules and our codes. And she works with him with the goal in mind towards just making Riverton a better place to live, and Rosie's just really great at it. And she's going to give you a presentation on procedures and some examples on what she's come up with.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, please bear with me. Sandy wanted me to talk for twenty minutes, and I haven't done that in a long time. Okay. Okay, the Code Enforcement Division, it's located in City Hall in the Community Development Department. And I'm clear in the back in that same department, and I work under the direction of the Community Development Director, Sandy Lewers. My duties have definitely extended since I got transferred from the Public Works Department. Our mission is to safeguard the health and the safety of property and public welfare through enforcement of technical codes, ordinances, and regulations. The primary function of the Code Enforcement Division works in partnership with the citizens of Riverton to promote and maintain a safe living and working environment. We help maintain and improve the quality of our community by enforcing laws and codes. This definition is a national definition of code enforcement. Code enforcement is the prevention, detection, investigation, and enforcement of violations of statutes or ordinances regulating a public health, safety, and welfare, public works, business activities, and consumer protection, building standards, land use, or municipal affairs. But I'd give you a definition of a nuisance. A nuisance is a condition which causes hazard or some detriment to the public health, safety, and welfare. Common nuisances include the accumulation of junk, animals, debris. Controlling nuisances help keep communities safe and livable. A nuisance involves an unreasonable or unlawful use of property that results in material annoyance, inconvenience, discomfort, or injury to another person or to the public. Common nuisances, including the accumulation of junk, animals, noise, dangerous buildings, sewage, unsanitary conditions. I call a nuisance just an irritation. Abatement, here's another definition. If the property owner fails to remedy the nuisance, the city may take action to abate the nuisance. The costs incurred may be recovered by placing a lien on a property. For example, our Riverton Municipal Code, the city may have a contractor cut the weeds on private property if weeds are not removed within the allowed time limit. And that's the only time we've placed a lien on a property is with weeds. A code enforcement officer responds to concerns of citizens that affect the quality of life within the city limits, such as zoning issues, weed control, debris, and public nuisances on residential properties. Inspections are performed throughout the city to ensure properties are in compliance. The code enforcement officer also follows up on violations as requested by the Community Development Director. I have received my code enforcement officer certification through Colorado about a year and a half ago. Next year, I'd like to get my advanced certification. The Colorado Association of Code Enforcement Officials, the membership extends through the Rocky Mountains and reaches towards Wyoming. The Wyoming Code Enforcement Officers meet yearly to discuss code enforcement issues and other training. If you report a violation, you can call us. My number is three oh seven eight five seven 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 one two, or the Community Development Department, three oh seven eight five six two nine nine nine. You can also file a complaint on our website. We have a complaint form online. Or you can obtain a form at City Hall or talk to someone at City Hall to file a complaint. On the complaint form, On the complaint form, you may remain anonymous, but it would be useful if you call back concerning questions of the case to keep me informed so I can call the customer and let them know of any updates. Here's an example of our online complaint form. Some common code violations reported by citizens include weed removal, trees and shrubs as nuisances, unsecured buildings, maintenance of premises, which is debris, property owners to clean sidewalks, signs placed on the public right of way, street sign utility pole, which are garage sale or yard sale signs, and abandoned vehicles. Those are the most common. Our compliance process, complaint is received. So when the complaint is received, I go out and do a side inspection. I take pictures to verify if a violation exists. These complaints are prioritized depending on urgency. Contact via email, phone call, door tag, letter, et cetera notifying individual of violation. So there's other documentation, other follow-up in the code enforcement program. It's a web-based program called iWork. And other documentation may include maps, door tags, pictures, letters, et cetera. Then there's a voluntary compliance period. So weeds and trees are ten days, so I've kind of got to wait for those ten days in order to do another inspection. And the last criminal citation and abatement are issued at the discretion of the code enforcement officer if I don't get any response with the property owner. Here's the code enforcement complaint procedure. Hope you can see that. So complaints are received through the email, phone, phone call or written form. And then a complaint is entered into the web-based program. A site visit is performed to verify if the violations exist. If they don't exist, a no, case is closed. If they do exist, uh, contact will be made to the owner, noting the violations to correct the actions needed. A reinspection time is allowed per violation. If property is still in violation, a second notice will be made via letter notifying the citation or abatement. A lot of times these letters are certified, so we make sure they get them. The property is re-inspected if the violation is corrected and that case is closed. If it still remains, the property is re-inspected. If it doesn't, it's re-inspected and the case is closed. If, if the weed or tree violation case is forwarded to the Public Works to complete, then that would be the abatement. And if any other violation exists, the case is forwarded to, for the police department to issue a citation. Of course, on the citation, uh, notes the date for court. And then the code enforcement officer attends court per citation. A lot of times the, the judge will ask me to give an opinion of the case, my recommendations. She'll give, uh, the defendant a chance to resolve the property. If not, she'll, uh, give them a small fine or back in court again. Compliance, the purpose of code enforcement is not to abate the property or collect fines, but to get residents to comply with ordinances and maintain a higher quality of life. We strive hard to work with residents, educate them of the violations and extend the time if needed for compliance. A lot of times I, I will give extended time to people that are making progress with their properties and we just don't want to turn them over to the police department or to Public Works to get these abated. But we do want to work with residents, hand out ordinances and try to work with them as much as I can. iWork Code Enforcement Program. The case is entered into our web-based code enforcement program that can track all activities such as phone calls, letters, documentation, pictures taken, inspections. Various reports can be developed based on the data collected. This is a program that I've been working with for a number of years. Does a lot of different things and can track anything that I want to track concerning that case. In two thousand fourteen, I developed a violation report. As you can see, there's nineteen types of violations. Abandoned vehicles, obstruction of sidewalks, depositing snow on street, placement of lawn sprinkler, property owners to clean sidewalks, setback requirements, electrical code, permits and inspections, home occupation, operating a business out of home in residential area, defacement of property, depositing for collection debris in yard waste containers, building and construction issues, fence and hedges, littering, maintenance of premises, keeping certain animals, trees and shrubs as nuisances, signs and weed removal. This is the two thousand fifteen violation report. As you can tell, since I am a part of Sandy's office in Community Development, my duties have expanded and I've dealt with over thirty-three types of violations. And I don't know if you can see all that, all those different violations. Some of the new ones, there's been some hazardous waste that I dealt with. There was some sewer leaking that I had to inspect. And littering, scattering deposit on streets, unsafe conditions. And that is dealing with our property maintenance code. It's a lot of debris on the out, on, on the inside where it was unsafe to live in that home. So we've had to take measures to do that. The unsafe condition on the exterior would be like board, like windows broken out where we might have to hire someone to board up a building. This is the activity report. And there are types of activities that have taken place for the year on the total amount of cases. So we had four cases that were forwarded to the court. They were all debris cases. Uh, I issued twenty door tags. Emails might consist with employees on a case or a customer having a question on, an update on a case. There were twelve cases that were forwarded to the police department. Most of those were trailers on the street. Since I primarily handle violations on private property, the police department handles public roadway. Um, we had to hire a contractor seven times. Currently, our contractor is our city crews. And they were basically just weeds. I completed over four hundred and seventy inspections. There was two hundred and thirty-four meetings where I met with customers, residents. I made three hundred and forty-six phone calls. There were only fifteen second notice letters sent out. And trying to reduce costs, what I usually do is send a regular letter first if I don't get any response. Then I'll send a second notice letter or a certified letter. There were twenty certified letters sent. So there was a total of two hundred and sixty-nine regular letters. And I've taken over five hundred and thirty-two pictures. Possibly at one property, I might take four pictures, so that number would quadruple.
Ma'am, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Just looking at those numbers there, um, I guess my impression is, is, you know, going out and making four hundred and seventy inspections, uh, only four of them going to court, only seven going to the police department and only having, uh, fifteen where they required a second letter. I guess I get the impression that a vast majority of people solved the problem?
I think most, most people, most of our residents are willing to comply. I have very few where I don't get any response. So I think, I think these numbers are really good. There's repetitive visits. I mean, that is our very last resort, that we want, uh, to call the police officer.
Yeah, I, I'm just looking, you know,
Right.
when you say you do, you know, you went out and looked at four hundred and seventy inspections and it only, only fifteen times did you have to send a second letter and very few times did you go to another agency like the Public Works or the police? That, that's
And I think it helps too.
Good to me.
Right. I think it helps to educate our residents about our ordinances. A lot of people really just didn't know. I'll go through, uh, some of these violations that we've dealt with in the past year. Um, it's my responsibility to follow up on abandoned vehicle violations on private properties. As I mentioned before, the public roadway is, uh, the police department's responsibility, although I have followed up on some of those. So an abandoned vehicle is an inoperable vehicle. Means any motor vehicle which cannot be operated lawfully on a public street or highway within the state for any reason other than lack of current registration or which cannot be moved under its own power. So this ordinance says a person shall not keep, store, park, maintain or otherwise permit an inoperable or unlicensed vehicle in areas owned residential A, B, BGA, C, PUD unless screened from ordinary view. So basically, a lot of people thought they could have a vehicle in, in their backyard and it was okay. Now screened under, uh, screened from public view could, could be a fence, could be inside a garage where as long as like we don't see it from a public roadway or right of way. We have had, um, some residents that would like to use a car cover. We want to get away from tarps. It's kind of an eyesore, so I have accepted some car covers for some abandoned vehicles. Here's a before picture. As you can see, um, both of these pickups don't have a current license. The vehicle to the right is held up with jacks. So since it's held up with jacks, uh, we consider this a huge safety issue due to the possibility that the vehicle could fall. There might be some neighbor kids that might enter the yard. So it was a huge safety issue. I explained that to the resident. And of course, wasn't very long and they complied and they removed the vehicles. Another violation, um, is trees and shrubs as nuisances, duty to trim. Any tree or shrub which overhangs any sidewalk or other public way established or traveled by foot, bicycle or other non-motorized traffic within the city shall be trimmed by the owner or the occupant of the abutting premise to a height of not less than eight feet from the surface of the sidewalk or it says twelve feet above the street. The city of Riverton does not get involved in civil matters concerning a tree overhanging between private properties normally. The next slide shows where I inspected a tree to verify it was hanging too low over the sidewalk. When I arrived, I could, I could see that the tree was between properties and not in violation. This is actually the picture, I think. So surprisingly enough, a tree trimming business was trimming trees across the street. And he came over when he seen me to give his quote to trim the proposed tree. One of the owners agreed to pay half and I later made contact with the other neighbor to get the tree trimmed. Both owners were in agreement and the tree was trimmed shortly. This incident resulted in a happy ending when all parties were agreeable and shared the cost of the expense. Sometimes it helps to be a mediator to resolve conflicts. So in this case, since it wasn't over the street, I really, uh, didn't need to do anything because it was between property owners. But I knew that this could possibly get resolved and the tree got trimmed. Heavy appliances. Heavy appliances stored in public view deemed a nuisance. No person shall permit heavy appliance such as a stove, dishwasher, bathtub, refrigerator or other air top container, washing machine, clothes dryer or other similar appliance to be placed or remain out of doors and not screened for public view for not longer than one day. So that is basically the ordinance. And we consider them a priority case. So if I'm working on a weed case or abandoned vehicle, this would take priority because these heavy appliances need to be removed within one day. Residents are notified that they have to get them removed within one day. We are worried that children might be able to crawl in them. There have been instances that, uh, children have died by getting into heavy appliances. Here's a picture of a heavy appliance. I alerted the owner that, of what an important issue this was. And she explained that she had hired someone to get the washer moved and within just a few days, I gave her an extra day. It was gone. Here's our weed ordinance. Shall be the duty of the owner, lessor or occupant to real property within the city to cut or dig and destroy and remove all weeds and dead trees upon such property and upon streets within the curb lines in front of or abutting such property and to the center line of alleys abutting such property. And this, it gives a definition of our different weeds here that we follow up on that are violations. Uh, field bindweed, Canadian thistle, milk thistle or any other thistle, quack grass, horry crass or white top, skeleton leaf, brisage, Russian knappweed, ragweed, yellow sweet clover, fox tail, dandelions, kosha, scapara or any other non-cultivated plant not consistent with surrounding developed areas. I just would like to comment that I have reviewed other, um, code enforcement entities. And they list weeds, not more than six inches tall and all weeds. So I come into some problems when I go to certain properties where I'm not really seeing these types of weeds and I'm seeing grass that's really tall. So I really can't follow up on the grass because it doesn't relate to these type of weeds. But in the summer and spring, I get inundated with weed complaints on private properties and in the alleys. I didn't get to many, as many as I wanted to. Since I stay so busy with so many weed violations, um, the staff has discussed getting assistance. Uh, I'm hoping so, so I can access more properties next year. Uh, property owners and occupants are contacted to cut their weeds within ten days. That is allowable time. Um, there's times when, um, they just can't find a contractor and they're having trouble with their lawnmower. If they're giving me some communication, I will work with them and give them a little bit more time. Here's some pictures, um, before pictures and after pictures. In this case, I had sent a letter out and it was done within just a few days. Other cases that we, of, of weeds, um, we've had to send to contractors to complete as no contempt, attempt was made. And we thank the city crews for doing a great job on this next property for removing the weeds and dead trees. This property was definitely an eyesore. The property, it took the city crews three days to complete. And as you can see, there are many dead trees and weeds. They were at least four feet tall. This property remained abandoned most of the summer. It took much research. And after much research, it was determined that, um, it was repossessed. So at this time, it was in limbo. The New Bank hadn't taken it over and so we had to assume responsibility. Property owners to clean sidewalks. Shall be the duty of the occupant or owner. If the pre, if the premises are not occupied of any premise within the limits of the city to keep the sidewalks abutting any part of such premises free from accumulations of snow, ice, mud, waste, and offensive material, papers and trash, and to remove the same within regional dispatch." I did research, the snow ordinance. It says reasonable dispatch. Other cities have a time limit. They might have three days, they might have five days, but if we were to go to a specific time limit, we of course would have to have additional employees to follow up that it was done in those three days. But most of the time when I issue a complaint, most of the people clear their sidewalks. I really haven't had a problem. This year, I have seen residents busy cleaning their sidewalks after a snow event. I've already seen that done. I think by educating the residents of the ordinance, it can reduce the number of violations. Here's some before pictures. And after pictures. Maintenance premises debris. "Shall be the duty of any owner, agent, tenant, purchaser, contractor, lessor, or other person in charge of any premises within the city including place of business, dwelling, house, apartment, tenement, construction site, or other establishment, at all times to maintain the premises in a clean and order condition, permitting no deposit of accumulation of materials other than those necessarily or ordinarily a tenant upon the construction upon the use for which such premises are legally intended." So this violation is definitely followed up year-round. I mean, it, it isn't seasonal at all. Some residents, when they have items outside, are not aware of the definition of debris. Debris can include automobile parts, tires, furniture. We do discourage furniture outside. It seems like rats and mice get in there, might have a big infestation. So, most of the customers that I've dealt with, sometimes I will go and visit their properties and show them specifically what needs to be done in their properties, help them organize things. So there's just a few that I have to ask the police to issue a ticket. And there's just a, a minimum amount that go to court. Here's some before and after pictures. You can see on this property, there's quite a bit of debris on this empty lot. This was actually a commercial lot. And I worked with this resident, letting him know of all the complaints that were being received. He put his employees out there, of course, he had his daily job to do and, and after, I probably gave him an extension of two weeks to get it finished. And then, he was getting ready to sell the property and then it was complete. Okay, this next slide shows no progress in, in debris. Actually, this property, a ticket was issued and a court date was scheduled. And these are, this is some of the issues that we deal with on debris cases. Another violation I've been following up on this year is the yard sale, garage sale signage, littering. So that is, goes under the littering ordinance. "Person is guilty of littering if he or she attaches or places any sign or other means of advertising or announcements upon any public right-of-way street sign, utility pole, or private property without the written consent of the property owner." So these type of advertisements are removed from the sign or utility poles immediately. So I'll go out, if I notice them or someone reports those, I'll go out and remove them. I then send a letter out to who I think might be the owner, who put the sign up. Usually, there's an address. So, and I'll post a picture inside the letter. So these letters, I think, help, help reduce the amount of garage and yard sale signs in the community. A lot of citizens I talk to say they're just unaware of the littering ordinance with garage sale signs. Setback issues. This is one of the new issues I dealt with since I came into community development department. Since that time, I've had extensive training that's helped me follow up on numerous violations in this department. The skid structure side yard distance is three point five feet. Originally, the setback required five feet for a side yard. Recently, the ordinance was changed to be uniform with the building code standards to require only one foot side yard setback for specific small storage buildings. In this case, the property is in compliance once that ordinance was changed. This next slide shows the current setback ordinance. Setback requirement. "A one-foot side yard and a one-foot rear yard setback is allowed for one-story detached accessory structures used as tool and storage sheds, playhouses, and similar uses provided the following criteria are met. The structure is exempt from permits, the floor area does not exceed two hundred feet, the accessory structure is portable or a skid-type structure. The one-foot setback dimension is measured from the property line to the closest projection of the structure." And in closing, I'd like to encourage the citizens of Riverton to continue to beautify Riverton in following the municipal code, the building codes, and the property maintenance codes. And I'd also like to thank all of our fellow employees that have helped assist in compliance of the properties. Police departments helped me. The Public Works, utility billing, they've definitely helped because they have to put the lien on the property and do all the financial part of this job. So, I thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Rosie. Anybody have any questions?
No, no, I have one question. From day one to the final time of the cleanup, what's the average time it takes for a complaint to get completed?
Depending on priorities. And I, within forty-eight hours. I try to follow up within forty-eight hours.
I mean, what time, what I'm getting at is, how long does it take for the people to clean it up? What's the average time from the day the complaint, the complaint?
You're talking about a debris issue.
Any kind of issue, just an average. I just need an average.
Well, that's hard because debris is five days. They're supposed to get it done in five days for our ordinance. Weeds are ten. Some people get them done right away.
So you don't have a, a, a track of what the average is?
I would say that most residents, if I were to give you an average for all of our ordinances, would probably get them done within five days.
Thank you.
I like her.
Okay.
She's called, I called and had Rosie look at several issues down there, Madison area, and it was just, oh boy. She got results. Thank you, Rosie.
Yeah, one of those, one of those issues on one home, just to update you, was an owner that lived in New Mexico and I had a really hard time finding him. I sent letters, no contact. So finally, I drove up the alley one day and I seen someone in the yard. It was a renter. And I told him the ordinance and it got cleaned up.
Well, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your work. I know you, you are busy every day.
Thank you.
Your Honor. Just to follow up on a few things that Rosie brought up, is there any desire from the council on these ordinances to look at them, to change the weed ordinance? Right now, we have a list of weeds. I mean, we could change that. Or the clearing of sidewalks, it's, it's, right now, it's just reasonable time. That's really hard to enforce, but, you know, if it's working, it's working. But if there's a desire to change any of those, council just needs to let staff know and we can work to amend those ordinances and bring them back to you.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I, I think from what Rosie said, it seems like people are overall responsive after they've been notified, and so I don't think we probably need to make any changes. If we're not running into any issues that the timing is getting, it doesn't sound like the timing's really giving you any problems.
Mr. Larson?
On most of that is, I think the citizens are unaware that they're in violation. I know several times on this council, I have had buildings too close and that problem was solved. And I can think of my own house and several rentals that I own where that violations were and aren't now because we changed those. And it's just, I think, a knowledge. And once you've, once you have that knowledge, then, you know, we're, we're on it. I know that really people in Riverton want to keep Riverton looking nice. I mean, Mr. Bailey could be stacking tires to the top of the moon and he doesn't. He takes care of those tires and that's good.
Start a mosquito farm or something, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Lee.
I have one more question to ask. In the last year, how many citations have we had to issue from the police departments? Do you know?
Less than ten. I think possibly around ten.
Thank you. Well, as an old weed guy, I guess, I, I guess I see that there's some issues with our current weed ordinance, especially if, if what we're going to do is try to enforce it cosmetically and, and try to say that anything that's not, you know, obviously an ornamental, Sri Trevor Bush, needs to be cut to six inches. And, you know, this year, this spring, we had lots of moisture and good heavens, grass was three feet tall. And, and so, you know, we really can't take care of that directly with, with the way our ordinance is currently ordered. So it seems to me like there's probably some room to, to, to address some of those issues a little bit more aggressively than what we do. And, and I think it would be helpful to, to Rosie if, if the ordinance was a little bit, you know, more clear as to what's expected of people. And of course, I'm willing to help.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey.
I, I think we should look at possibly coming up with a program where we make weed spray available or, you know, if there's a way we could work with, I don't know if Weed and Pest has some, you know, equipment that we could have. I know, I've heard people talking about being able to rent a weed sprayer, you know, pretty inexpensively, maybe just for the chemical, and maybe get that out early so that people have the opportunity to get ahead of that curve a little bit.
I think we only have to, we only have to advertise that. The Weed and Pest district has got a half a dozen sprayers that they rent for ten dollars a day. And you can get chemical air inexpensively on cost share. And the problem, the problem that we run into is that the Weed and Pest is primarily focused on agricultural properties. And so, you know, you go to Weed and Pest and you want to buy Roundup, you're stuck with getting two and a half gallons of it. And that's a lifetime supply for the average homeowner. Most of that, most of that chemical will be spilled on the garage floor. Okay, or a big dead spot in the backyard someplace. And, and so, you're really better off, people are really better off to, to purchase their, their chemicals at the lawn and garden store. I know it comes in a smaller container and it costs a lot more money per unit of active ingredient, but you can use it up in a year or two and you're done with it. And it's, you'd absolutely be astounded at the amount of, at the amount of chemical that shows up at the Weed and Pest shop every year that is, that is unusable now. A grandpa died, the kids come back to town, he moved in from the farm and he brought a bunch of stuff with him just in case he needed it. And, and so they get in there to clean out the house and the garage is half-full herbicide and stuff. And, and in some cases, the labels have fallen off, the bottoms, the bottoms rusted out of the can and the chemicals all run down into the floor, you know, it's in a big mess in the corner or something like that. And then, so then they've got a big cleanup problem, so. But the Weed and Pest does have equipment available. Even if you're going to buy lawn and garden equipment, you could, or a chemical, you could still come and get the Weed and Pest stuff. So, I think that, I, I think the source, source for that is fairly easy to come by in, in Fremont County and the city doesn't need to get directly involved in that other than to make sure that people understand that they can go there to get that service. Is that it? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or adjourned.